Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 8th regular meeting of the Upper Darby Education Board of Directors. For our work session tonight, the first item on the agenda is the kindergarten center's students salute the flag.
I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to take this opportunity to provide the members of the community an update on the status of the negotiations with the Upper Darby Education Association. As you are aware, about one month ago, the teachers' union voted to reject a tentative agreement between the parties. Since that time, representatives of this board have met with the union on a number of occasions to discuss ways to resolve the impasse between the parties. The two parties met over the holidays for a number of hours and currently continue to talk. We hope to get back to the table with the teachers shortly. As these negotiations continue, it is important to be mindful of our desire as representatives of this community to enter into a new collective bargaining agreement that strikes two key balances. The first being a fair contract with the teachers and the second being a contract that is sustainable for our tax-paying community. As a reminder to everyone in the community, the revenue that we derive comes from the state, local, and federal sources. However, what has been clear in many of our past discussions is revenue is lacking within the district and we are limited in the amount of local revenue we can generate. As many of you know, our ability to raise taxes is capped under the state law Act 1 of 2006. If you have been following the changes within the Act 1 limits over the last few years, our ability to raise taxes in fact decreased over the past couple of years. Therefore, the ability to maintain additional revenue has gone down for the district. Moreover, notwithstanding our limits on the ability to raise revenue through taxes, the military within the Upper Darby community is already very high. In fact, it's the sixth highest in the county. Therefore, when we take into consideration raising taxes, we need to be mindful that our community is already paying some of the highest taxes in Delaware County. Finally, and certainly, one of the most concerning aspects of the district finances over the next five to 10 years is our significant capital needs with regards to our facilities. The most recent quarterly update totaled our facility needs at over $110 million. This number is strict considering the current conditions of our existing buildings. This does not include our athletic fields or the eventual outcome of our facility study, which will certainly increase the previously stated amount. It does go without saying that the board must be mindful of multiple needs within the district, whether it be facilities, curriculum, special education, as well as compensating our teachers fairly. Therefore, as we enter into this hopefully final stage of getting to a new contract with the teachers, we can strike a balance of these needs in the district in order to enter into a sustainable contract for the district for years to come. I thank you all for being here tonight and I hope that answers some of your questions. Next up is a video presentation on yoga day from the kindergarten center.
Good evening, President Mitchell, school board members, Dr. McGarry, cabinet members, students, teachers, and community members. I'm Deana Williams. I am the principal of the kindergarten center and tonight we are here to present to you our yoga day, which we did on our early dismissal in December. So for last year and this year, we have tried on our early dismissal days because they are short in session, about an hour and 30 minutes, that the students come in. We tried to make it a fun activity day. So last year, we did a fall fun day, which was centered around teamwork and games outside, kind of like a field day in the fall. We did a big go on game night. And this year, we wanted to try a yoga day. So our school social worker friend Gibson, who has since retired as of January 2nd after 21 and a half years of service to the Upper Darby School District, did present this to the staff and thought it was a fabulous idea. So I am going to let the video do the talking and some of the students here tonight will see themselves up in this video. So let's watch that video.
Mrs. Gibson was talking with a couple people, including myself, about some ideas and what to do for one of these early out days and we wanted to involve different ways for the kids to learn how to calm themselves down with us.
We wanted to have a fun day where we read a story to the children, but they become the animals and characters in the story.
So we came up with yoga.
It's like exercise with lots of poses.
Having a chance to do something where they're actually using their bodies and they're doing movement and stretching and kind of incorporates with a story that, you know, they're familiar with that we just read in our classroom. It's a nice day.
The book we did today was called "The Very Hungry Caterpillar" by Eric Carle. It's a real popular book for everybody.
Kind of ties in a physical activity with the literature activity. So, you know, it is related to a story.
The website Cosmic Kids, which has Ms. Jamie on there.
So the woman tells the story of the very hungry caterpillar, but incorporates yoga moves with it. So the kids kind of follow along and they copy her.
They read the story and did the yoga poses.
With yoga poses, you could be a character like a rock or a tree.
They were able to bark like a dog and neigh like a horse and roar like a lion.
We went up on our feet and we were holding on to our feet and like...
And at the same time, we're teaching them how to do the different movements and stretch out their bodies and take in their deep breaths.
Some teachers were brave enough to get up there to actually do the poses with the kids and act as a leader.
We were able to do it so that the kids can watch, but they did an awesome job even without our direction. They were so involved with the video and doing the actions. And the children, I think, take away something unique, community building, and they're doing it with other classes and they see other teachers up there and that were one big school and one big family.
While doing the yoga, my friends from, from the start, Carter and Jamar were standing next to each other and they were doing it together.
It's good for the body and if you eat fruit after, it seems better.
And if we teach them these behaviors and have fun doing it, then this is something they can carry through with them.
I did it all winter break.
They are so into it. They are paying 100% attention and they're animating it themselves in their body. And they're not paying attention so much to all the other kids and what they're doing because your body's moving and you're 100% into the instruction.
Kindergarten, they're five and six years old and we want it to be fun. We want them to know that school is fun and that there's a chance to have a little bit of like downtime and fun time.
So I would like to thank Christine and Jayola for being our stars of our interview and our yoga video. So thank you very much. I hope you enjoyed our yoga day as much as we enjoyed it. It was a great time. And teachers are still doing it in the classrooms. The kids love it. It's a great time. Thank you.
Next up is Dr. McGarry.
Deana, kid's great job. It was really cute, like a good stretch. Each January, we take time to honor, celebrate, and recognize the very challenging role our Board of School Directors plays in the governance of our district. Let me first dispel a myth for the audience. School board members are not paid. While school board members are elected to serve, they are not compensated for the hours of time they spend supporting the programs and opportunities we provide our students. Tonight, as a token of our appreciation for your efforts leading our school community, we provided each of you with a book by Simon Sinek, Leaders E. Last. Simon Sinek focuses on the why and how some teams can work together and support one another and why some do not. Our administrative team is also reading this book this school year. Speaking of our administrative team, the flowers in front of the board table tonight are a show of gratitude to our board from the members of UDASA. So thank you for your work and dedication to this district. There is no question that the work of our board and the work that they must participate in requires a lot of focus, hours of dedication, and without question, a willingness to function as a collective team. I would like to say thank you for your commitment to continuing to focus on the children of this district. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. McGarry and the members of the UDASA group for the beautiful plan. I'll look forward to trying to keep it alive. At this time, the regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on December 17th from 5:30 until 7:15 and January 3rd from 5 o'clock to 6 o'clock for personnel matters. And this evening, from 6 o'clock to 7:20 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there will personnel and litigation matters. Mr. Grant, would you please call the board?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Gentile?
Here.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Dr. Rucci?
Here.
Dr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell? Here. Thank you. Dr. Rucci, do you go over the minutes of the combined work session?
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting, and reorganization of December 4th, 2018, and the special meeting of the board December 18th, 2018 are in the hands of each board member and the debate available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, would you please call the board, Mr. Grant?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. And next up, the approval of the report of the secretary. Dr. Rucci?
Thank you, Madam President. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, please call the board.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. And next up is the report of the treasurer. Dr. Rucci?
Thank you, Madam President. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, would you please call the board?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. And next up, we'll have our report of our student representatives, Sarah and Zoe.
The buildings I reported this month are Oakhurst Elementary School, Aronik Elementary School, Highland Park Elementary School, and Upper Darby High School. And across the district, December was a big treat this month for our students. At Aronik, they hosted a winter clothing drive in which they collected hats, gloves, and scarves. Similarly, Hillcrest hosted a winter clothing drive in which they collected socks, scarves, and hats, which were then donated to a foundation that helps recovering add-ins. Over at Highland Park, they continued their Big Brothers Big Sisters program that is held in association with Wawa. Highland Park also hosts a partner program with some of the residents of John Woody Village in which the English learners can take a few trips over to help several immigrant senior citizens who were in their place years ago. Teachers from Highland Park also go to first grade students' houses, bring them supplies, and reach them. This event is called Teach and is sponsored by Lansdowne Rotary Club. Aronik hosted their annual Rainy Around for the holidays, which promoted health, fitness, and sportsmanship. Many of the events and programs that each school hosts are largely credited to the wonderful parent volunteers that we have throughout the district.
Good evening, everyone. Here at the high school, Deppard Darby Choir and encore singers had a busy season of performances that included Longwood Gardens, St. Dorothy's, a performance with the Lansdowne Symphony Orchestra, and many more. DECA placed one-third of their students at their regional competition in Sootes FBLA. A few colleges also held instant decision days in which admission representative came to the high school, reviewed a student's upcoming manner materials, and made a decision on the spot. That was a great day for many of our seniors.
Does that conclude your report? You guys have been very busy, so we're looking forward to another interesting report everywhere. Thank you so much for all you're doing. And the next up, I'm going to call up Mrs. Melody Massantonio, the president of our union, who has a statement for us tonight.
New year's off to a good start. I also want to thank the school board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. If you guys don't know, this month is School Board Appreciation Month and even though we are still working on a contract, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the time and energy and all of the volunteer time that you guys do to help try to improve this district. And for that, we thank you. But I am here tonight to give a very, very short update on the Upper Darby community on our negotiation status between Upper Darby Education Association and the district. After the overwhelming rejection of the tentative agreement, the negotiation team sent out a survey to its members to identify the weaknesses and guide the next round of negotiations moving forward. Before winter break, as was said earlier, we did have two informal meetings with the district and a formal meeting between both sides occurred on December 27th. And we will continue to negotiate and I anticipate a meeting between our team and the district representatives within the next week or so. We also recognize that our district is greatly underfunded by the state. And while UDEA and the district work to settle our contract, we will also work together to pressure Harrisburg to bring greater financial support to our district. Whenever there is an opportunity for Upper Darby Education Association and Upper Darby School District to work together to move state and federal legislators to provide greater support for our district and community, we are open to working and supporting each other in that effort. But before I go, I do want to take this opportunity to thank the Upper Darby families and community for all the support you have shown and continue to show, the teachers, counselors, nurses, and support staff of Upper Darby School District. And I hope the new year brings you great health and much happiness. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to this partnership. Just in case I forget later, on the table out front are postcards that you can send to your legislators, some of the newly elected ones, or just an ask for increase in education funding. There will be a report, a little bit more detail, but just in case anyone needs to leave, there is an organization that we are going to be partnering with called PA School Work that is throughout the Commonwealth. And we are coming up with a plan for Delaware County for the ask for Delaware County, for all Delaware County schools, and increase investment. On February the 2nd, it's a Saturday, it'll be at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. The registration will be at 8:45 and we're really hoping for a large turnout from Upper Darby. We do need your support in order to secure more funding going forward for our school district and all of the other underfunded school districts throughout the Commonwealth. With that being said, Dr. McGarry, your superintendent's report.
Happy New Year and good evening, Board President Rachel Mitchell, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. Thank you again to Ms. Deana Williams, principal of the kindergarten center, and to our kindergarten students and staff for opening up our meeting. While my comments will be brief, I see this wonderful staff engagement and community engagement as an opportunity. I know the board agrees with me when I say that a community who is engaged, along with wonderful teachers and staff, germinate an outstanding school district. First, the administration will be sharing a draft of 2019-2020 school calendar later this month. We will be recommending August 26th, 2019 as the first day of school for students. I've also asked district administration to share the draft calendar with the Instruction and Curriculum IAC/UDEA team. It is quickly becoming that time of year again when the Board of School Directors must begin to prepare a balanced budget for the 2019-20 school year. I understand that there are members of this audience who deserve to be compensated fairly for the effort they give to this organization. I understand that there are members of this audience who would like to see our facilities improved. I understand that there are members of this audience who believe we should and could do more for our students. What is important to recognize, especially in this atmosphere created tonight, is that the administration and the Board of School Directors are working for the same causes. And we will share the same focus, providing the best education to the students who attend our schools. We won't always agree on every situation or detail, but this administration is always willing to engage with the school board, district employees, and the community to find solutions to the concerns and problems we face as a district. I hope everyone here tonight continues to stay involved and engaged after this evening. Again, we are working for the same causes. As we dive headfirst into 2019, we will be reviewing our facilities plan in the next few months, as we have in the last year and a half to two years. We will be asking this board to consider options for new schools, building renovations, security upgrades, new athletic fields, a new gym locker room rooms. We've been discussing this work and its cost for the past year and a half, developing a plan that will be in the best interest of the students we serve. We will also be moving forward with the recommendations of our marketing consultant as they pertain to our branding campaign, developing a timeline and costs for implementation so that our students and community can build a sense of pride in our schools. And I have asked the administration to fine-tune their departmental needs. While we realize that the community can ill afford significant tax increases, we're also aware of the need to provide the necessary academic support for all of our students. What will it take for us to accomplish these goals? What will it take to pay our staff appropriately, improve both academic and athletic facilities, and to provide the best opportunities to the students who attend our schools and what they deserve? It will take your continued engagement and support. It will require all of us to push for a fair and appropriate funding of public schools. If we can foster and harness the energy and pride in this community to get the funding that is rightfully ours, I have no doubt our programs will flourish more than they already do with the limited resources we have now. We will discuss our staff needs, facilities needs, and academic programming needs in the next few months, and we ask our board and this community for support. As our new tagline so aptly states, "Opportunity, unity, and excellence." For whatever reason you are here tonight, I believe we have the opportunity to unify over our most mutual desire for excellence. Board President Mitchell, members of the school board, before I conclude, I do want to highlight the fact that our girls' varsity basketball is 7-1 and they're playing next door tonight. I hope they have a victory. And our girls' cheerleading is about to come, the PIAA later on this week in Hershey for the competitive cheer competition. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are reported as part of the record. No vote is required. The next up, we'll have our committee meeting summaries. The first one is the Education and Pupils Services. Mrs. Curry?
The Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting agenda summary is as follows. There were three, four agenda items. The first agenda item was informational. It was on the Future Ready PA Index. Ms. Kelly and Mr. Marshall explained the Future Ready PA Index and the functions of the indicators and the dashboard that is available to the public. The board and the public had the opportunity to learn more about the changes from the school performance profile to the new federal requirement under Every Student Succeeds Act, ESAA, including how schools and districts are impacted by this information. Links to the Future Ready PA Index will be posted on the district website. This agenda item was informational only. Agenda item number two, which requires board action this evening, was the school improvement plans. Dr. Manfree and Mr. Salerno provided information about the district's school improvement plans. Areas of accomplishments and areas of concern were shared, as well as the action steps to address the needs of the various buildings in the district. This agenda item was for board action regards to the district Title I schools. All plans are posted on each school's individual website. Agenda item number three was informational as well, Upper Darby Alumni Mentorship. Ms. Kelly, along with Zach Pierce, Matt Chaco, and Orin White, presented a mentorship opportunity at the Upper Darby High School. Zach, Matt, and Orin are all Upper Darby High School alumni, and the platform they will be using is entitled Bump Out United. This opportunity will also help support the college and career indicator on the Future Ready PA Index. This agenda item was also informational. And lastly, but not least, agenda item number four, which requires board action this evening, was System 44 Pilot. Kristin Hoyt presented a proposal for a pilot program in the second semester at the Upper Darby High School. System 44 is a reading intervention published by Horton Mufflin-Hartcourt and supports the basic needs of reading. After analyzing the data, and if successful, this program may be implemented the following year. This agenda does require board action this evening. As far as public comment, there were no public comments on the Education and Pupils Services committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. The next meeting of our committee is on January 22nd at 6:00 p.m. The Finance and Operations Report, Mr. Brown?
For the Finance and Operations Committee, there were two agenda items. Agenda item number one was informational. The topic was the Capital Improvement Plan update, the fact that the projects are out for bid. The School Board of Directors were provided with a quarterly update as it relates to the capital improvement plan, changes made to create a more uniform outline of capital projects, and there's several additional projects added or reviewed. The School Board of Directors were also provided a summary report that provided details as to projects currently in process and future projects to be included in the budget process for the upcoming year. Agenda item number two required board consensus. It was involving the LERTA, the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act 76. The School Board of Directors have requested that Mr. Kyle Vermon, the district solicitor, provide a presentation of the committee's presentation of a proposed resolution, process of adoption, designated areas and boundaries, and process of application. After discussion, the board provided consensus to move the resolution forward to a vote on the finance and budget report scheduled for January 8th tonight. Regarding public comment, there was just one, and it was regarding agenda item number two. The speaker explained that the township is in possession of the LERTA map and defined the specifics and advantages of LERTA. That concludes the Finance and Operations Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Curry?
The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public and move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, hold vote, please. Mr. Grant?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is the Personnel Report. Dr. Taylor?
Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the board?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to recognize two retirements, Mr. Grant and Mr. Hughes. And even though Mr. Hughes is coming up shortly, but Mr. Grant will be with us till end of June, but I think it's very exciting and we're excited for you going to the next chapter of your life. And talking about leaving the district, I also would like to recognize Dana Spino, who's sitting behind Mr. Grant, who will be leaving us in the middle of this month. And Dana, we wish you the best of luck in the next chapter of your life, too.
Comments from the public? Seeing none, hold vote, please. Mr. Grant?
Ms. Gentile? Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the The next up is the Supplies Report. Mrs. Gentile.
The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Is that a second, Dr. Taylor? Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, hold vote please.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the Facilities and Use of Facilities Report, Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities Report, the Use of the Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. And I move for the adoption this evening.
Are there any comments from board members?
I do have a comment. Just two events. I always look through these reports. Um coming up in June, the Upper Darby Police Association will be holding a fundraiser here in the County Library Center on June 11th. They always have a magic show, which is really a fun event for families. And that's from 4:00 to 10:30. And also, a little bit further in the future is Community Shred Day, which is sponsored by the Township. And that is on September 21st um in our high school parking lot in the morning. And we always want to thank anybody who gives us any type of donation. And in this report, Lehigh Gas and the Exxon Corporation donated a thousand dollars to Beverly Hill Middle School to go towards their STEM program. So just thank you for any donation.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, hold vote please, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci. Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields. Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the Finance and Budget Report. Mr. Brown.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from board members?
Yes. Uh so I've gotten used to preparing these comments, so I thought I'd uh give the comment I prepared. Uh by approving the Finance and Budget Report this month, the board is approving the following two significant items. A LERTA resolution. This resolution provides a tax break for the improvement of business properties in specified non-residential parks of Upper Darby Township. The resolution does not provide a tax break for homeowners to improve their properties. The resolution specifically provides the following tax breaks on school district taxes. First year of occupancy, ninety percent reduction in the increase in assessed value. Second year of occupancy, eighty percent reduction in the increase in assessed value. Third year of occupancy, sixty percent increase in the sixty percent reduction in the increase in assessed value. Fourth year of occupancy, forty percent reduction in the increase in assessed value. And fifth year of occupancy, twenty percent reduction in the increase in assessed value. Please note the following. The tax break only applies to the value of facilities, not land. The tax break only to the tax break only applies to the increase in value due to construction, not the value before construction starts. Three, starting with year six, the property owner pays the full amount of assessed school taxes on the increase in value. And four, when the township created the underlying ordinance, a map was created that indicates the areas of the township that are eligible for the LERTA tax break. The second item being approved is what's known as the Accelerated Opt-Out Resolution. By passing this resolution, the school board is agreeing not to raise school taxes by more than 3.3% for next year. The value 3.3% is the adjusted Pennsylvania State Index, what's known as the Act One Index, which states the percent by which the school district can raise taxes without holding a voter referendum on next year's budget. It should be noted that by passing this resolution, the school board is agreeing to raise school taxes by not more than 3.3%. The actual tax increase may be less than 3.3% and will be determined as the school district works through the budget process. It uh I would also like to note that in the in the world of unfair public education funding in Pennsylvania, the state actually gives the uh least well-off the the school districts in the least well-off communities the ability to raise school taxes the most. So if that sounds unfair to uh it sounds unfair to me as well.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noiers. Are there any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, hold vote please, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Uh with the exception of the LERTA resolution, I approve the report.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields. Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. Could you notify the township that we passed the LERTA resolution that they have asked us to pass in accordance with their um 2004 resolution? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. So next up, we have our collateral assignments. First up, Delaware County Community College, Mrs. Jordan.
Uh we have our annual meeting on January 16th, so I'll be able to report since the February meeting.
Okay, great. Um Intermediate Unit, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, I have a few announcements. Um the parent workshop for this month is titled Making Sense of Sensory Processing During Work and Play. This interactive workshop is designed to help families learn about their children's sensory systems with a focus on ways in which sensory intervention can support their child's behavior and ability to learn and participate in their home and community activities and routines. Attendees will have the opportunity to learn basic sensory processing principles and explore interventions and practical ways to support their child's developing sensory processing skills. This workshop will be on January 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Morton Education Center located at 200 E.L. Avenue, Morton, PA. Also, the DCIU is partnering with districts to host a job fair for K-12 Delaware County Public Schools on Thursday, January 10th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Once again, at the Morton Education Center, uh which is 200 E.L. Avenue, Morton, PA. Representatives from Delaware County Public School Districts will be hiring for both full-time and substitute per diem positions. Lastly, the DCIU has updated its Teacher Resource Center. All Delaware County teachers are invited to use the center's resources to create materials for your classes. Teachers will have the opportunity to develop to develop exciting classroom activities using curriculum-related software, discover the available digital media library, and gain hands-on experience using the latest technologies. Equipment available to the teachers includes bookbinding machines, button makers, Ellis machines, um a wide selection of laminators, poster printers. And teachers also have the option to uh email materials and pick them up at their convenience. Teacher the teacher teacher resource center hours will be Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 2:00 to 4:00 and Tuesdays and Thursdays from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. And you can find out more information at the DCIU website, DCIU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Aye. I am with the Legislative Council of Representatives along with Mr. Fields. We had a meeting of the Legislative Council on December 12th. And I do want to thank Dr. McGary for attending. He brought a lot of ideas to the table. And we we truly appreciate that. Um so to give an update on the legislative update, the but they believe that the budget, the forecasting of the budget will be more challenging next year for the General Assembly following the election year. Um we are, as a legislative council, partnering again with G.A. School Works on their advocacy groups and putting pressure on um early in this session um to increase um public education funding. Like I mentioned earlier, there will be a county-wide event on February 2nd at 8:45. And I will be sending out an email um to our school community and to the staff in regards to supporting this event. Again, I have these postcards up in the lobby. There's addresses. I would implore you to please fill them out. I'm happy to mail them for you. So if you want to leave them filled out in the lobby on the table, I I would be happy to take care of that for you. Um we have our next meeting tomorrow, but the agenda for the February 2nd event is basically the entire meeting. And we have already a sketch, so we are working hard and quickly to get this accomplished, to come up with a Delaware County plan. Um and that's all I have for Legislative Council. Mrs. Gentile, the Mendelson Tyson Scholarship Fund.
Yes, we did have an organizational meeting in December. We needed some committee places to be filled. We will start our uh search on the applications for the Mendelson Tyson Scholarship very soon. And of course, they are very prestigious and looking forward to seeing who the winners will be.
Thank you, Mrs. Gentile. Mrs. Jordan, Home and School? Nothing to report. Technology, Mr. Brown, or or Dr. Rucci? Nothing right now. Um anything from the PSBA representative? Mr. Brown, yes?
Uh so PSBA is conducting a training this Thursday. The Applied School Board Director Training, and it's really professional development for school board directors. And Madam President, the school board director, Ms. Des Noiers and I will be attending that training. Three, I'm sorry, Don, I'm sorry. Not deal, sorry. Three things will be covered in that training. Three things they're focusing on. Evaluating key finance financial documents for the budget and reporting materials, reviewing and analyzing board policies and administrative regulations, and building positive board culture by developing strong collaborative skills. So we'd be happy to attend that, Don, Rachel, and I will be reporting back what we learned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any updates across the LERTA resolution from the Policy Committee?
I just do want to thank Dr. Taylor and Mrs. Jordan for helping me with the communications, the monthly communications. I hope that it's an effective source of communication for the community. I also do want to recognize Dana, who has been sort of my backbone in getting those out. And we will be missed, and I'm looking forward to sort of teaching me the ropes on how to actually send it out. So thank you again for that. Is there any other old business from or any other collateral assignments from the board? Any old business? Just under old business, I just want to highlight two events. Um there is a Palava Hut discussion at 6:30 this Thursday at the Multicultural Family Center. It's near 69th Street. I know that Dr. McGary will be there, as well as some other school board members, um elected officials and from the township and the state. And we're looking forward to that discussion. Unfortunately, like Ed said, we have to, the board does have to split our time. Uh but the community is invited to attend, and it is a discussion, you know, a a discussion that happens in this hallway that they've made into an area of the community engagement. And it's, we did do it a couple years ago, and it was a nice time, so I'm hoping that it's beneficial for the the community. Uh also, the gala is coming up, and we're really looking forward to showcasing our students on June 19th. June, I want it to be summer. January 19th, 3:00 in the afternoon, and it's it's always a great time. And then they are, the Foundation will be having a follow-up event this week night out, and we hope that people from the community will support that event because it does go back to our students. Are there, is there any other old business from board members? How about new business? At this time, I'm going to invite Melanie Massantonio to join Mr. Brown and I up at the podium, and we're going to read a resolution that we're going to be asking the board to adopt tonight. So as I said earlier, as part of the P.A. School Works, every, hopefully every school district, all 504, will be passing the same resolution, sending a message to our state legislators. And I really appreciate the union being up here today, sort of saying, we're behind you. So um the resolution urging the General Assembly to adequately invest in public schools and students by the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District. Whereas Pennsylvania's more than 1.7 million million public school students deserve the highest quality education, and the state's public schools work best when they have the resources to give all students the opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas Pennsylvania is 46th among the 50 states in the amount of state subsidies allocated to support elementary and secondary education, among the lowest in the nation with the state's share of funding public education at 38%. And Pennsylvania has the widest funding gap between wealthy and poor school districts of any state in the country. And whereas the state has failed to keep pace with the rise in cost of mandated special education for students with disabilities, which has increased by 1.6 billion over the last decade, even as the state's share of the cost has fallen from 36% to 25%. And whereas the state has failed to keep pace with the cost of providing career and technical education pathways to students, allowing its share of CTE funding to fall to 8%, leaving school districts with a 90% share of the CTE budget. And whereas inadequate state funding places additional burdens onto local taxpayers to pick up a greater share of public schools' costs to ensure that our students' education is not jeopardized. And whereas the state must make greater sustainable investments in public schools to lift all schools and prepare them for today's competitive workforce. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Upper Darby School District urges the General Assembly to take legislative action for public education by increasing basic education funding through the state's fair funding formula, ensuring sufficient resources for special education and career and technical education, and generating the necessary revenues through sustainable recurring funding sources. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be submitted to the elected senators and representatives of the Upper Darby School District in the General Assembly and to the governor of Pennsylvania. So I appreciate you standing in solidarity with us, and we hopefully will be passing this resolution when we step back to the table. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move that the school board adopt this urging the General Assembly to adequately invest in public schools resolution as stated.
Thank you. Our good comments from the board. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, hold vote please. Paul Verris has a comment.
Kim Tooster, 610 Foss Avenue. Uh just one very, very brief com- uh comment. There is a constitution of the state of Pennsylvania. This constitution of the state of Pennsylvania requires the legislature to provide 50% of funding for all of its students. And that legislature has not deducted that. If there is anything we can all do together now, tonight, and for the rest of the year, it is cooperate in every possible way to make that legislature aware of the fact that they are not living up to their responsibilities. Thank you very much.
Any other comments on the resolution from the public? Seeing none, hold vote please.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there any other new business from board members? Okay, at this time, we'll have our um public forum. I recall on the speakers that have signed in and the order that they have signed in, please approach the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and you'll need to keep your comments to a three-minute timeframe. The first speaker on my list tonight is Lisa Faralgia.
My name is Lisa Faralgia, 268 Gramercy Drive, Clifton Heights, Pennsylvania. So I'm here to make to talk about the deplorable condition of the locker room, field, and facilities. No locker rooms. No lockers in the locker room is a huge problem. The boys that have equipment stolen, clothes stolen, wallet shoes, cell phones, et cetera. In the budget for 2018, there's an allotment for $3,000 for lockers. Where do these lockers go? Were they ever purchased? And why not in the locker room? Administration needs to think about our athletes. Our boys that have stench water for three days due to excessive flooding in the locker room. It took three days until it was cleaned up. It took three days until it was cleaned up. My son sat in the shower along with ten other players in the locker room due to overcrowding. The boys had a chair to sit on and hung their shoulder pads and helmet on shower handles. I am asking, as a taxpayer of Upper Darby Township, to find some kind of money to rectify the conditions of the locker room. As for the seal, as for the fields, my son playing football and baseball, I at least asked for the holes on the field to be filled and for the rocks to be taken off the field. It's dangerous. Sophomore year, my son sprained his ankle first day of baseball practice. And I'm not asking for a turf field. All I'm asking is for maintenance to be kept up on the field. Since I'm talking about the fields, how about the termination of Coach Rufenak? When he went public about the deplorable conditions of the facility on a private alumni page, all he did was ask for the locker room and the field to be cleaned up. He's been asking since two thousand and eleven at the end of the year meeting that he has to have the field cleaned and the lockers to be kept up and the facility cleaned. This is neglect on your part. I get his frustration, but does he need to be terminated for speaking the truth? For having his own vision of how a locker room should look, for trying to make it better for the athletes of the school? What does that show our players? It shows them don't speak up for yourself, don't speak up for your teammates, and don't speak your mind because you'll get in trouble. That's not what we want to show these boys. Coach Gentile, a man who has dedicated over thirty years to the football program and to the school, a graduate from Upper Darby School District, was told he'd be done after the two thousand and nineteen season. Coach Gentile, who was going to retire in two thousand and twenty-one after the hundredth game against Haverford, but instead he was told he had to leave next year. Where is the respect for this man? Where is the loyalty? He has a true, true dedication to this program. The administration didn't even give him decency to honor him or respect his decision. Give this man the respect he deserves and let him retire with dignity. Let him stay until the hundredth football game. He deserves it. These men are more than coaches. I'm not, I'm speaking as a parent of a son who plays on the football team.
Mrs. Faragia, can you please wrap up your comments?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. What I'm saying is I'm asking from a parent, from a player, and myself, what our vision of the program is, is having school board overturning the decision that administration has been made.
The next speaker on my list is Mr. Jeff Gentile.
My name is Jeff Gentile, eight twenty Cedar Avenue, Drexel Hill. I'm a lifelong resident of the township, proud of the Upper Darby School District, graduated Upper Darby High School, class of eighty-one, where I played football. I was a volunteer coach, softball, and baseball. I also was a football coach at Upper Darby, off and off about twenty years. Head freshman football coach, head JV coach, and defensive RCD as a line coach. I'm also past president of Upper Darby Martin's Education Foundation, and most importantly, I'm the brother of Brett Gentile. I'm going to defend a member of my family who, in my opinion, has been treated unfairly by this school district. The decision and the methods in which it was carried out by the school district, or my brother, were, in my opinion, demeaning and disrespectful, disrespectful, not just to him, but to my entire family, who have literally served all, my brothers, my mom, my dad, served this school district and this township for decades, going back to the nineteen seventies. And that's how we're treated. Global Connect, seriously? Announcing the decision on Global Connect and saying the district has a different vision? Are you kidding me? That's how you treat someone like that with that kind of work and pride in this district? These coaches, and not just the football coaches, all the coaches in this district go above and beyond just simple X's and O's and wins and losses. They become mentors and, in some cases, surrogate parents for these kids. They help with college applications, problems at home, personal problems, physical problems. That kid comes up with a problem with those coaches, I'm telling you, because I was with them. They'll do what they have to do to help them. For any wins or losses, let me tell you something. They already won in my book, and they certainly won with these kids. Now, the Garnet Valleys, the Conestous, the Westchesters, the Haverfords, do they have to do all the gift, all the off-field demands that our coaches have too? I doubt it. I think not. But if they did, I bet they would give their coaches more support than this district has, and, and, and... I'll keep it short. Again, I just think this was the wrong decision to be made, and the school board should take a serious look at reversing this decision. Thank you.
Awee, Woodside Avenue. Again, I'd like to give a shout-out to our amazing teachers. They enrich and make a difference to our students every day.
Thank you.
We all received that notice about the coaches, Coach Gentile and Coach Rufenak. During the past four years, Coach Gentile has not only been a teacher and a guide for both players and parents, but a servant in his advocating for the players and the program itself. I'm not going to go into specifics, but being a football booster's parent, Coach Gentile conveyed to me how important trust and respect is. His heart is with the boys and their welfare, not just with football. He was wronged in the decision last month. Similar to him is Coach Rufenak. He advocated for boys in the program by sharing pictures of both the field and the locker rooms on social media. He was fired for this and not allowed on the property anymore? He's an alumni of this school! This just leaves me baffled with what the vision is for this, for our future, for our future children and students coming up. The field is in bad condition. It needs to be addressed. There are rocks misplaced and no grass on the field. In nineteen fifty, that was acceptable. By now, two thousand and nineteen, it's not. One of my twins, I have twins and they both play, hurt both of his ankles on the field. Other players have been hurt as well. And this is not just the football field. These are all the fields. We need to make sure our students, both in the classroom and on the field, are safe. There's been proven studies that demonstrate the more efficient the program is and the components, the more successful the students become. The locker room is not sanitary. The players have their place, have to place their items on the floor with many dangers lurking. You're talking about any type of infection or disease. We, Unity, have to prevent these, this from happening. They have no lockers. We need to have lockers. Lockers secure their personal items to avoid theft and get their items off the floor. They have no showers. We need to make arrangements for the players to use the showers. Showers that work. The players and coaches are a team. There is no I in team. We all need to make sure they stay a team. In addition, the conditions of both the field and locker room should be condemned, unsafe and healthy. The players deserve better. The coaches deserve better. As a tact player, I'd like to see the coaches remain in conditions on the field dramatically and improve immediately.
Thank you, Mrs. Sinclair.
My name is Jeanne Coach. Address is eight oh one Stamford Road. I'm reading this for Jen Herme, who resides at eleven oh eight Terracore. She's too nervous and upset to read this, so I'm going to read it for her. The culture we live in today is see something, say something. As leaders, teachers, advocates, and citizens, we all try to emphasize this, this to our youth as well as society. This premise and standard should stand true on all aspects, including our well-respected football coaches. They have nothing but best interests, nothing but the best interest for our students and district in mind. It's very easy to suddenly have a vision for our football program now that, now that our blinders have been removed thanks to a highly regarded, respected coach that simply spoke the truth about current conditions. That did not ensue new outrage among the public. Most were already aware of the conditions. The administration's inappropriate response, actions is what caused our overwhelming outrage. We should all be able to speak without fear of a price and punishment. What example is this setting for our children? Coach Gentile and Coach Rufenak and all the coaches all hold the values and integrity that I, for one, want my sons as role models. I implore you to, I implore you to right this wrong and reverse the administration's inappropriate decision immediately. Thanks, Jen, Jen Herme. As far as I'm concerned, I have a student that graduated from this school last year, this past year, and I have a son that's currently now in this school. I am a community person who volunteers her time all season long for this high school, for the Drexel Horrors Association. My husband is a basketball coach and a football coach. Coaches just don't do X's and O's. They are mentors to these children. They help these children. When there's no fathers in their homes, they are replacement fathers for these children. I think it's deplorable what happened to Coach Gentile and Coach Rufenak. It's despicable, and they need, and the administration needs to be held accountable for what they did, and something needs to be done. As a taxpayer in this community who pay, as we all know, our taxes are really high, this is, this is unbelievable that this is going on, that my son has to be in a locker room where it's stinking, it hasn't been cleaned, and it looks like a hoarder lives in that facility. Do you live like that in your home? Do your homes look like that? This is our children, and they should not be in those type of conditions.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sinclair. I'm at Pennoway, Woodside Avenue, CK. I'm a proud parent of two twin boys on White Michelle Campbell spoke earlier. I, as a parent, am absolutely disgusted with how the district handled the firing and, I'd say, sensitive pushing of Coach to be retired next year. He didn't deserve that. He's given everything to this district. And as far as Coach Roof goes, these guys are not just coaches. They are just as much of a father to my sons as I am. They have given them everything. I have seen these coaches raise money for this team and program. No, family. They're a family. They have encouraged our boys to become brothers, which they are. I, I also like to say that one of you mentioned earlier about the branding of the school district, and you're looking at the, this, your yellow tablecloth and purple and that emblem, that's not your brand. Your brand is your teachers' logo. And members of the community, and, and they are your brand, not something you're going to invest money in. Invest money in getting water out of our basements. I just pulled up here from football practice, and there's hoses draining water from the locker rooms outside. My kids have had items lost, stolen, money taken from them that their coaches reached into their wallet in front of me and replaced. They have bought them clothing that was taken from them and replaced it for them. These aren't just people that are on your payroll. They're role models, and they're teaching our kids, and there they all are, that you need to speak up and, and be a respectful part of your community. Thank you, and I hope you reverse your decision.
I heard a lot of whats. We'll have to try and figure out.
State your name and address again.
Oh, sorry. Tim Toonster, six-ten Foss Avenue. Thank you. I heard, what are we going to do to help increase funding for the school district? I've heard, what are we going to do to try and settle the school teachers' contract fairly? And those are really good questions. We began the evening with two little girls who stood here, and I don't know about anyone else, but I had a little difficulty saying the pledge, listening to them. They were beautiful. They're the why. They're the reason teachers come to school every single day. They're the reason you live for that moment when you see a child who has, is struggling to do something that they believe is impossible, and you have an opportunity to see them cross that threshold. Whatever we need to do, it's the why that counts. It's why we're here and why we're all here together, and I'm grateful for the respect that was expressed at the beginning of this meeting on the part of the school board toward the teachers and on the part of the president of the Teachers Association toward the school board. This can be done. You can do this. We believe in you. We're here to help you. But the why is what we have to keep in mind, and the people who stand in front of that why every single day.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing for tonight. A motion is in order for adjournment. All in favor? Motion carries. Come ahead, everyone.